Yes, Christopher Burke.
Here.
Commissioner Slimer.
Here.
Commissioner Store.
Here.
Christopher Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Lasky.
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson. And Chair Kerby.
Here. Moving on to item B. Should you introduce the staff that's here for the record?
Yes, tonight we have serving as our replay. This is Andrew, he's the city attorney. Filling in for Ann who is vacating somewhere. Andrew and he will ably take care of us from a legal perspective. Nancy's over here really running the show as she does. We have Sammy here to actually manage the projects and as the interim director, I'm here to just pretend to make things look good.
Thank you. So moving on to item B, open forum. This is an opportunity for any citizen to briefly address the planning commission. And any matter that does not appear on this agenda, upon being recognized by the chair, please state your name and limit your oral statements to no more than three minutes. Matters that appear to warrant a more lengthy presentation or commission consideration will be agendized for further discussion at a later meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the open forum? Seeing none.
Sheriff, Sheriff Pitt, there's nobody attending remotely who wants to speak either.
There's no one remotely tonight?
There are four, but they don't have their hands.
It's disappointing. Okay, reports. Do we have any reports from standing planning commission committees or staff?
No.
Okay, moving on to D, the consent calendar consists of items that the planning commission considers to be non-controversial. Unless any item is specifically removed by any member of the planning commission staff or audience, the consent calendar will be adopted by one motion. Items removed will be considered in the sequence as they appear below. If any member of the audience wished to have any item removed, follow the remote meeting procedures referenced above by using the chat bar or raising your hand. If you do not have access to the Zoom meeting platform, please email the acting director of planning and building Brad Evanson at B E V A N S O N at cityofbelvedere.org and indicate you would like to remove a consent calendar item and identify the item. After removing the item, the planning commission will call for comment at the appropriate time. Is there any commissioners who remove anything from the consent calendar?
I have to recuse myself from the February 28th meeting minutes, item two. And also on the body of the February 21st meeting minutes because I was recused. But I read the notes and I agree with the notes from the prior meeting that were included in item one, so.
Okay.
I would enjoy this.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. It's recusing myself from the consent calendar items because I was absent from the meeting.
I was absent from part of the meeting from the 21st.
I was here for them all, I voted in, it's okay. So is there anybody in the audience that wants to remove anything from the consent calendar? Anyone on Zoom, Nancy? Okay, seeing none may have a motion to approve the consent calendar with all the appropriate impressions from attendance.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, roll call, sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Store, you're recused.
Yes.
I'm accused.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Lasky.
Yes.
Commissioner Slimer, you were accused also, yes.
Partial. Was it partial?
Vice Chair Johnson. And Chair Kerpy.
Yes.
Okay, we have four eyes, zero opposed and three refusals, so.
Perfect. Moving on to the public hearings, item number three, may we please have a staff report?
Chair Kerpy, just a minute, we're trying to get him logged in, he's going to work from the lectern.
Okay. Take your time.
On, okay, on my screen it's saying from beginning, but. Is this all right?
Yeah, we can see, yep.
Thank you Chair Kerpy and members of the planning commission for your consideration this evening as an application for design review to remove 11 visually significant trees. Provide new landscaping at 101 Golden Gate Avenue. So when I, when I click it doesn't fall off.
Okay, Kevin, you want to help us?
Well, the project site is a 14,400 square foot parcel in the R15 zoning district that slopes down to the west and towards Richardson Bay. The site is developed with single family homes and is adjacent to single family homes in all directions. The project proposes to remove nine eucalyptus trees ranging in size from 23 inches to 58 inches in diameter at breast height. And two Monterey pines, 23 inches and 34 inches in diameter. Here's a view of the eucalyptus trees from Belvedere Avenue, the westernmost pine tree from Belvedere Avenue and the pine tree along Golden Gate. The proposed plantings include three coastal live oaks in 15 gallon pots, seven toion in 15 to 15 feet tall in five gallon pots. Five California lilac to 12 feet tall in 15 gallon pots. And four San Gabriel flannel bush to 12 feet in 10 gallon pots. An arborist report was prepared for the site assessing the health of the 11 trees proposed for removal. The report stated that the three, three of the eucalyptus trees have crossing limbs that increase the risk of limb failure. The Monterey pines were infected with pitch canker and not likely to recover. The remaining trees were generally in good health, but were considered a fire hazard and risk by the arborists. The project is considered categorically exempt per SEQA. And staff has received one letter in support of the project from the neighbor and owner at 102 Golden Gate Avenue. As outlined in the staff report, staff believes the evidence supports the required findings and recommends the planning commission adopt the resolution granting design review. Thank you, and I could answer any questions?
Thank you, does any member of the commission have questions for staff?
Larry.
Just real quick, in the package I got, there was some, some three buckeye trees, but then they were crossed out. Are those now excluded from the, the plan, the proposed plan?
That was, that, that plan was, was a mistake from the applicant. The one that we have here is the, the correct plans, those ones aren't part of the plans.
Okay, thanks.
Just given how important trees are to the city, sorry. I'm just curious if there's any verification process that the city does to, to verify if the trees are in fact sick or do pose an immediate danger? Because that's really what we're talking about for, for a large number of these trees.
Yeah, absolutely. The, the first thing is we always contact Arbor Science. That's the, the company that does the arborist report and then they let us know if the tree is healthy. On this particular project, I reached out to Mike Lantier, who is the fire marshal. And he, and got his perspective. Typically a project like this, he wouldn't have any concerns with any issues with, and he had no concerns regarding fire safety or hazards with these trees either.
So just to clarify, so the fire marshal said he didn't have any concerns that these trees would be a fire hazard?
Yeah, he had no concerns with these trees being a fire hazard.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, may we hear from the applicant? You need to come up to the lectern to state your name. Is it on?
My name is Eva Hassan and I live on 101 Golden Gate and that property is ours. And we are requesting from the city to look into our project to remove those trees. Because of multiple reasons, actually. One of them, we thought they were fire hazard, but it's good to know that, you know, the fire marshal was not thinking that. However, in the recent years, those trees have become more of a liability for us, we feel. They're losing limbs left and right in the face of a lot of big storms that happened recently. You, most of you visited the website, the, the site itself, and then you saw there was quite a bit of debris. That is, some of it actually landed on the main road and got put, put back into the lot, into the lot by, by the gardeners. So in, in, in that consideration and in, in the past, those trees weren't, this, for some reason, we really didn't have that, that type of an incidence in the past. We've had storms about 20 years ago when my son was born, I, I remember that very clearly, but we never had this level of destruction. And so for that reason, I believe replacing them with something a little bit more realistic for a backyard as backyard trees would be much more appropriate for, and, and, and then safe for everyone else around, that live around that neighborhood.
Thank you. Does any commissioner have questions for the applicant? Larry? Sorry, I'll head this way next time.
Yeah. Yeah, I do. I'm curious what the plan is, do you, you cut the trees and leave the, the stumps or the stump's going to be removed? Do you know what?
Well.
And also, how do you manage the, if you cut them and you leave the stumps, how do you stop them from regrowing, which they tend to do?
We have, we have current trees that were cut together by the city and us last year and they have been growing. And so with what we typically have been doing is our gardener is mandated to sort of, you know, cut the new growth in general. When they're young, it's very easy to sort of manage that. We are definitely open, if the city would like us to further remove these stumps or do something about them, we're definitely open to that. But like, I'm not, I'm not, you know, an arborist and I don't know like any of these things. I'm going to hire my gardener to put, to put these plants together, but if there is a further consideration you want us to take, be happy to listen to that.
Any other questions? So I, I have one question, so if you leave the stumps there. It's kind of like a grove of eucalyptus tree. If you leave the stumps there, there's really not a lot of room to plant trees, so.
Okay, so, so what I'm hearing from you is we need to figure out a way to remove the stumps too, so that at least where we, no?
Well, I, I, I'm not an arborist or a master gardener, but I.
No, well, that, that is true, although I think there is room to put trees around them. I think, in my opinion, it's better to leave the stumps and have them grow because they hold the soil. And so that would be my opinion, if you, if they're cut down and there is certainly room there to still plant some, some more trees, but.
If, if there are any trees that are, that become problematic for the city at some point, we're happy to look at it. I think this is, you know, where it's not one way, it's two ways, you know, you tell us what you would like to see as well. And I'm not in this business, this is like my first project and to cannot remove those type of trees. I'm very open to any suggestions, so please let me know.
Okay, and then you just did the planning plan, you didn't do any kind of irrigation plan for the new trees?
We will, we will need to do that too.
Okay, and then my final question was, is why is the owner at 104 Golden Gate the applicant for this project?
She's helping me out. We're not, I mean, I think the neighbor also across the street, 105 maybe is also. She's helping me out. Okay, but we're both working on those projects together.
Okay, because the removal of the trees will really change the view from their house that they didn't have before.
It's an added benefit to them and that's like an icing on the cake. But, but, but generally speaking too, like, you know, it's definitely a liability for me. If you see what's going on with the storms, you can definitely kind of, you know, put yourself in my shoes. You realize this is very important at this point in time.
Okay, all right. Seeing there's no further questions, thank you, I'll bring it back to the commission to discuss. Commissioner Lasky, you want to lead off?
Your, your whole, the whole environment there is going to change when the eucalyptus trees are gone because of the wind. And they really are probably planted for, for wind. So that, you know, I, I'd like to hear what other people say about them. I, I would leave them in, I think they provide a big benefit. The one, the one pine tree, the Monterey pine, number 10, it's in your deck, I think definitely needs to come out and there's been a big piece broken off from that. And the other tree that is, is it number, yeah, a number 11. I think that should be looked at again because it looks very healthy to me and it also is holding the hillside under the road. And that I would encourage you to leave. So those, I would like to hear what the other commissioners really say about them. And the new trees to go in have to be really, particularly the oak, 24, 36 inch size box. They can't be a 15 gallon can, they'll be really teeny, it'll take them years to grow. And also the toion has to be 24 inch box and that's a huge area where they're going in and and you already, you, you addressed the fact of the irrigation, which you, and I know you already irrigate, which we're all appreciative of. The five corner area where the lavender and the olive tree is. So it is something else to consider since that area is already planted with lavender. You might even extend that up beyond the, where the olive tree is. And that happens to be a dentada that is very robust and you really don't have to do much to it. So that's just another idea on the landscaping that you might, that you might want to do. So those, those are my only comments at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Slimer?
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Lasky about many of the proposals she has. I, I'm worried about all of the eucalyptus trees going down because it will make such a difference with that area and, and increase the wind. I do agree also that the, the one Monterey pine that is on your deck needs to definitely be removed. And if possible, that the other one, number 11 could be cleaned up and, and salvaged. It'd be nice to keep that because I do think it, it helps keep the, the soil in that area intact. So, and I also agree that we definitely, if you are taking these down, you're, you're going to need to put more planting in our larger plants. So my take on this is if the eucalyptus trees do need to come down, which I was afraid of because of the hazard of eucalyptus trees as we are now looking into it in, in Belvedere. If they do definitely need to go, then we really need to go with quite a bit larger planting in that area. But if they can be kept, I think in the long run, that would be a better way to go because I think it does help with the wind and stabilize the, the land there.
Thank you. Commissioner Hart?
Yes, having lived here for so long, it's, it's like a gate up to the upper part of the island when you drive up and, and see those recognizable eucalyptus trees. And I felt I was going to try to fight tooth and nail with the fire marshal to ask for, for him to leave at least one or two of them. But I was afraid that it, this, that the fire danger was going to overrule any, any stay for the trees. But as the fire marshal does not see them as a danger, I am very, very excited because I would like to see most of them, maybe not all nine, maybe you could thin them out. Where you have three in a clump, take one out and then up limb, the limbs that are crossing over. Clean up annually all the fallen debris because unfortunately eucalyptus are known to be very messy. But it's a yearly thing that, that probably needs to do instead of just letting all the debris just sit there in the, you know, year in and year out and just accumulate and maybe add to the fire danger. So I am, as I said, delighted that they do not need to come out and therefore I would love to see them stay. I think the, the pine tree that is growing in your driveway or drive deck definitely needs to come out. It's been so compromised by being surrounded by human buildings and, and cement and so on that it's admirable, it's made it this long. But I, I guess it's time has come and I agree with Commissioner Lasky and Slimer maker that the other pine tree, I think can absolutely be looked at by a good arborist and be pruned to be a very pretty, bold pine tree. So for that reason, I would not recommend that one to be taken out either. And I think the replanting is very minimal, it's miniscule in the scope of the size of your backyard that you have. I think it would take years for anything to, to cover your hillside anytime soon. So I would follow the advice of, of Commissioner Lasky to up them to the biggest 36 inch boxes that you can possibly get. And add the irrigation that our chair was mentioning so they can get a good start. And I have talked to some horticulture people and it is a known fact that trying to interplant a eucalyptus grove is very, very hard. And I also looked into the history of these trees. In 1892, 1,200 eucalyptus trees were brought to the island and planted. And these are definitely part of it, you can see it if you go through our pictorial history here, you can see how the golf course and how they then planted all those. So these are really old eucalyptus trees and to try to put anything else is, is going to be a challenge. You might be able to do it like you can plant anything in a pot. But I would not hold my breath and think that you can have some gorgeous new landscaping in between all these eucalyptus stumps and make it any, to anything of value to look at or, or use as soil holding nature forces. So with that, I, I haven't heard any of the commissioners say what, if they are making the findings or not, or are we holding back on that?
No, you can go ahead and say.
So I, I will then say that I cannot make the findings to remove all these trees. I can see trying to plant, increase the planting around your property. And take a one, take away one big Monterey pine. take a one, take away one big Monterey pine tree.
Thank you. Commissioner Burke, please.
Thank you. So in terms of the eucalyptus, I was in a different frame of mind, thinking that fire hazard was also a key issue, both there was safety and fire were the two things driving the recommendation to remove them since the fire concern has now been eliminated. Based on the fire marshal's opinion, it really comes down to safety and is there a real safety issue in terms of the trees? I don't think we have enough information to, to say whether there is one or not. I think we'd have to get another opinion to assess whether or not there is truly a safety issue. And if there is, I think that changes the discussion and, and I would be much more open to making the findings for removing the eucalyptus if there really was a safety issue that we needed to address. So for that, I can't make the findings because the information isn't available to guide that decision. For the Monterey pine number 10, I support removal of that. For number 11, I, I don't have enough information to counter what the other commissioners are saying, so I'm going to defer to them. They're two master gardeners here. And so if they feel that that tree number 11 can be saved, which is counter to what ArborScience is saying, I will defer to them on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Store?
Chair, can I ask one question to our council, please?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned listening. How does it work if, if a resident has a concern about a liability? And they're requesting us to give them permission to remove that liability? And then we don't give it. I'm a little worried about that. Does the city wind up taking on liability as, as we render that decision? I don't know how that works. That's a question I have.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Well, good evening, Andrew Shen, filling in for Dan Fort tonight. So I'm not sure if I heard based on the testimony so far and the commissioner's comments that there is any risk of liability. As far as I can hear, there is no fire danger, as Sammy shared with us. And it's at least unclear whether there's any other safety concerns.
Well, I guess I'm concerned because I, I've lived around eucalyptus trees. I've grown up around them. And the big limbs fall from a very high distance. And if somebody, if they strike somebody, they're going to kill them. And if there's falling into the street on the street below, I can see it as a liability, or if it even happens to somebody that's working in the garden or a gardener working in there and have a limb fall home, it can get killed. So I, I think the liability is real. My feeling. I just wonder how can we actually say no in that case?
Certainly I can't opine on whether the, the liability or risk or safety concerns are real. I'll defer to people that have more direct factual knowledge of the situation. But let's say hypothetically at least, I don't know if this is the circumstances here, but let's say hypothetically, if the city is on notice of a dangerous condition like a tree that is about to fall down or a tree that is severely having branches that can blow down and severely injure someone. If we are on actual notice, then I think the city does have an obligation to address it. But based on what I've heard so far, it's not clear that's necessarily the condition of the trees at, at issue here. But again, I'll defer to the commissioner. That's one factual matter for you to consider. Can I bring it back? Can I make my comments?
Yep.
So I read the materials and visited the site. And I, I think, you know, our island has a lot of areas that are in desperate need of regeneration. And I think this is one of them. Those trees are monster trees. They've been there a long time. I do think they, they create a liability for those people who walk along the, the lower street. That's Belvedere Avenue. And, and I hear, I hear the other commissioners talk about it acting as a windscreen. But also worry about them standing up and being blown over because they're so tall, they could impact, if they were to fall, they could impact neighbors' homes. So I, I think, I think it is time to, to reconsider or consider changing that landscape there, taking those out and replacing them with something a little smaller that can grow up and be attractive. And I think that they'll continue to grow and the, I think we'd see an increasing liability risk over time. They're just going to get bigger and, and, and so I think the other thing is I'm glad to hear the stumps would remain because I think that area, when I look at it, it's a bowl shaped area. I have a feeling those were originally, this is a feeling, I have a really, those were originally planted to retain the soil there because that looks like a historic slip area where the landslide had occurred. And so it was probably, they look like they were installed to protect the, from future landslides. So I think keeping the stumps, there's a good idea. I think maintaining them, keeping them from growing is a real challenge because they grow so fast. Take over your yard that you plant. So it's something you have to consider. I think the two Monterey pines are past their useful lives, so I would support their removal. So I'm, I, I'm in favor of the, those plans. I was concerned about planting of the toyon trees in the one oak too close to the road below the Belvedere Avenue. I'd like to see them at least 15 feet back horizontally, major height horizontally from the street edge. So we don't have them growing over into the street. Those are my comments. And I, I guess since we're, I would support this. I, I agree with staff's findings and I would support the, the design review for the removal of the trees.
Thank you. Vice Chair Johnson?
Thank you. So I'm really of two minds on this. I came in with one perspective and much like Commissioner Burke, I was really looking at this through a safety and fire lens. And now that it's been made very clear that there's no fire concern and that we're really not clear what the safety issue is, I feel like I understand what you're saying. But could that be said of any big trees or something in particular about eucalyptus that poses a special hazard that would warrant removing this whole grove of them? That's not clear to me. So I think that I would like to just have them looked at again or have that made clear so that we can really have a a clear determination there. And maybe it's something that can be solved with just thinning out and trimming some of those branches, just to make it less of a safety hazard. And I, you know, as for the other two trees, I, I understand, especially the one that's right along the deck, wanting to remove that. You know, trees like this really do create such an aura, and it's really hard to replace that with anything, even new planting. So having heard, you know, what our tree experts have said here and master gardener, I think I'm in agreement that I, I can't make the findings, but I would just say if we could have these looked at again and to really understand which of the eucalyptus are of particular safety concern and maybe just addressing it more surgically. So we're not taking out a whole section of trees that really do add a lot to that part of the island. Thank you.
So I also visited the site, read the staff report and agree with the majority of the commissioners here that the primary reason in the arborist's report for taking the eucalyptus out was primarily a fire hazard. And with the fire marshal saying that it wasn't a fire hazard kind of changes the the reasoning for taking the trees out. And so I would concur with the majority of the commissioners that I think you need to relook at this project and have an evaluation of the eucalyptus trees to see what could be done. If there was a few that needed to come out and others needed to be maintained, it doesn't look like they've been maintained for a while. So I think that the project needs a bit of a reevaluation so that we can support it. So at that, taking that into consideration, I would also not be able to make the findings for the resolution as amended. And so I have to ask the applicant, you, you have a few choices at this point. You can ask us to vote. If we vote and the majority denies the project and you wanted to continue on with the project, you would have to refile all the paperwork and pay additional fees. Or you can take the option of continuing it, having further studies done and bringing it back to us at a future date.
Could I say something? Even if that happens, is it possible to adopt a resolution allowing the one pine tree to be?
Yeah, the one pine tree definitely can come out. And then the other pine tree should be evaluated to, to see if it can be saved. But the one pine tree, we could approve that tonight.
Chair Kerpyat, if I may, one other course that could be if the commission votes to deny the project, the applicant can appeal to the city council.
Oh, third option is, is that we could vote? And if it was denied and you didn't like our decision, you could take it to city council. So you have three choices. I'm sorry, I didn't hear. To continue it, okay. All right. So may I have a motion to continue the project to a future date?
Can we, and also as we
Okay, so we should do the resolution for the one pine tree? That's number 10, I believe?
Number 10.
If, Chair, if I may, you don't have to, if, if the applicant's requesting a continuation, it might make sense to not vote on one aspect of the application.
Yeah.
Continue the entire application.
Okay.
Well, I guess I, I guess so, but my thinking was some of the branches have broken off of that tree and perhaps she might want to take that out. I mean,
Okay, yeah, all at once would be more economical, I think. So motion to continue, please?
So I move to
I just want to verify that the commission did provide opportunity for public comment on items as well. I'm not sure if I heard you.
No, I didn't. Okay. So we're going to open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the room that would just to speak on this? Is there anyone on Zoom, Nancy? Thank you. Okay. I guess we can have the motion.
Okay. I move to continue the design review for 101 Golden Gate Avenue.
My second.
That would be to a date uncertain? Or date not specified?
Yes, to get reports.
Okay, we'll call. Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Slemaker?
Yes.
Mr. Store?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Lasky?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Chair Kerpyat?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number four. Staff report, please.
Thank you again, Chair Kerpyat and members of the planning commission. For your consideration this evening is another project for design review to remove eight visually significant trees and provide new landscaping at 104 Golden Gate Avenue. The project site is a 22,500 square foot parcel in the R15 zoning district that slopes down to the west and towards Richardson Bay. The site contains a single family residence and mature trees and vegetation and is adjacent to single family homes in all directions. The project would remove five redwood trees ranging in size from 27 inches to 36 inches in diameter at breast height. One coast live oak, 26 inches in diameter. One Monterey pine, 42 inches in diameter. And one Monterey cypress, 40 inches in diameter. A land survey provided by the applicant indicated that the pine tree is on the neighboring lot at 102 Golden Gate Avenue. The property owner of 102 Golden Gate, William Hasler, sent staff a letter granting removal of the pine tree should the project be approved by the planning commission. Here are the, the, the five redwood trees and coastal live oak viewed from Golden Gate Avenue as well as the Monterey pine and cypress from Golden Gate Avenue. The project proposes plantings, including one coastal live oak in a 15 gallon pot, one San Gabriel flannel bush to 18 feet in a 10 gallon pot, three California lilac to eight feet in a five gallon pot, and seven toyon to 15 feet in a seven gallon pot, as well as two California buckeye in 15 gallon pots. And arborist's report was prepared for the project site as well, which assessed the health of all eight trees. The report determined the cypress was a high failure risk. The pine was likely to decline due to pitch canker infection. And the redwoods and oaks were generally in good health, but would damage the driveway if kept. 104 Golden Gate is located in a high sensitivity area for prehistoric resources. On March 14th, staff sent a letter to the Federated Indians of Greatin Rancheria to consult about the proposed project. The tribe responded, letting staff know they would review the project. As a condition of approval, the applicant would be required to follow any mitigation measures provided by the Greatin Rancheria. Staff has received one letter in support of the project from the neighbor and owner of 102 Golden Gate Avenue. Staff believes the evidence supports the required findings for design review and recommends the planning commission adopt the resolution granting design review. Thank you.
Thank you, Sammy. Can we hear from the applicant, please? Oh, is there any questions for staff? Larry, thank you. My right hand man.
So same question as last time. Actually, no, I don't have questions for staff. It's for architects. Sorry.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry. So are, 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 are trees able to be planted on this property? Or do we have to wait until the Indians will be able to look at the site?
That, that's a really, really good question. Originally, when this application came in, it was on me. I didn't think that planting trees would cause this concern. It's best to wait for the tribe's consultation before, before we move, at least before the project is approved. And if the tribe recommends a different location for the trees, I would suggest that either in the final landscaping plans, we look at that or come back to the planning commission based on a new planting plan, based on what the tribe said. They may, they may say that there's no issue with this project at all, but just to be safe.
I actually have one more question. On the hillside, this is really more for the applicant, but on the hillside, have there been other trees taken out? It's been kind of cleared away, that hillside. Do we know?
That, that, that is a good question. Maybe the applicant can answer.
Okay, thank you.
When, what's the timing on when the, the tribes get back? Is there a
When what's the timing on when the the tribes get back? Is there a time limit? After which they don't, they don't don't slow up the project or how does that work?
I I emailed them. I sent the letter on the seventh and they have 30 days to respond. So if by the seventh of next month, there's no response or consultation from them, then that means we can proceed with the plans as proposed. Or are they okay with the plans as proposed?
Thanks.
Bye, Chair.
Yeah, I'm sorry, one more. I'm sorry if I missed this, but did the, were there any fire concerns from the fire marshal on any of these?
No, no, I showed both projects and he had no concerns.
Okay, thank you.
As a process question though, for can we technically vote on this if we have to wait if the tribe has to respond first? I mean, we can certainly hear. Commentary today, but I mean, are we able to vote if one of the outstanding issues is a response from the tribe?
I think that's for a legal counsel.
Sorry about that, working on the technology. So I think as staff has teed this resolution up, I believe that they are envisioning that the commission could vote on the resolution tonight. Pending either hearing back from their tribes or that we have given it the process a couple more weeks to play out. So certainly if the commission is inclined to approve the resolution tonight, you know, certainly they can move forward with the project tomorrow, it would at least need to give a little more time and that would be a condition of approval for the resolution.
See, no other questions for staff with the applicant like to. See applicant here? Are you the applicant? Oh, she's on Zoom?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay. Would you like me to share video or is that not important? Hello?
We're working on it.
We're working on the technology. Hold on.
Hello?
Hold on, we'll let you know. Okay, you can proceed.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm the applicant. I'm Genevieve Michaelcheck, the resident at 104 Golden Gates. And I've applied for the removal of these trees. The trees that I suppose they all concern us, the Monterey cypress is a particular concern as it overhangs Golden Gate Avenue. Dangerously, in our opinion. And there's a steep slope just into the street and the tree has just gotten so big, it's leaning and hanging and it's. It's quite old. We're worried about branches falling on neighbors, people walking past and cars. And I know that the Arborist report was concerned about that as well. The Monterey pine, as we understand, is nearing the end of its life cycle and has. Afflictions that aren't likely to heal, so we'd like to take that out at the same time and we have the full support of our neighbor. On the property line that shares that tree, he's very happy to see that tree go. The redwoods and the coast live oak, we really love and would like to preserve, but. When we see the the damage in the driveway, which is quite significant. That has happened over the last many years. We became really concerned about the foundation of the home. These trees are just getting bigger and bigger and because the trees were planted on a very steep retaining wall. Their roots can only grow in one direction, which is towards the house and they've sort of torn up the driveway. And we're worried if they continue to grow, they're going to be straight into the foundation. So there's a concern for. The safety of our home. We're also happy to modify any replanting plans or take any suggestions from the commission.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner?
Sure, I have one question. You were just talking about concern about the roots intruding on the house foundation. Is that based on? Any particular finding? I mean, that's not in the Arborist report specifically. So I'm just curious as to backing for that.
My, when the Arborist visited, he spoke to my husband who was there at the time and they had discussed it and my. My husband became very nervous, basically. I mean, he could see what the Arborist was pointing out in terms of the driveway damage and the house is right there. So I'm not sure why he didn't put it in the report, but it's not, it's not my impression that. The roots of these trees. And at a certain point, after which point we can consider the foundation safe. I mean, the foundation is right at the edge of the driveway. And as far as I understand, trees roots grow.
Yeah, thank you. And then one other question is maybe you can help me understand and the other commissioners. I'm just curious about the relationship between 104 and 101 and the coordination of all of these trees. There's 19 trees in total that are being proposed to be removed. Yes, to replace them and it. I mean, the applications were put in together. I mean, there was discussion about, you know, you're helping 101 out. It's just a. Feels like sort of a a more holistic project in some respects that's being driven by 104. And so I was just curious if you could just help us understand that further.
Yes, I'm happy to share. So we bought the house at 104, three and a half years ago. And when we moved in, we noticed that there were a lot of trees around and we were hoping to. Create some window holes and then out some things to create more views for our family. And so we started talking to our neighbors. At 101 Golden Gate, 105 Golden Gate and 101 Golden Gate. About possibilities for doing that. And as we started talking to people, it became very clear, especially from the neighbors at 102 Golden Gate. That the eucalyptus, this group of eucalyptus were a huge safety concern to them. It causes them a lot of worry for the reasons that you. Noticed or that you noted. When you was talking about 101, they're very worried about. All the debris that lands on their home and on their roof. They're worried about large tree, they're worried about large branches coming down and that the trees will blow down because of the prevailing winds onto their home. The residents at 101 were very happy to talk about working together to remove those trees at the time. The fires were really bad and all the neighbors understood that eucalyptus were a danger, so we were all very happy to remove them. The new neighbors at 1 Belvedere Avenue were downhill of the eucalyptus trees. Were very, again, keen to get those gone. They they see those as very tall looming danger above the home they've just built. So there were actually. Plans to do a cost sharing. Plan to remove the eucalyptus trees and possibly also these two pines, which. Are a group of what I believe were five pines at 101 Golden Gate that were. Very visibly nearing the end of the life cycle. So three of those have already been removed by the owners or by the city. One, one was already moved by the city and the two that are remaining. Appear to be a danger to the rest of us. They seem to be on their way out and we'd like to sort of do it all at once. So the neighbors at 1 Belvedere, 101 Golden Gate, 102 Golden Gate and 104 Golden Gate have all been working together for actually a few years to. Remove these trees that are a concern. And so I've been part of that. And the trees on my property are just related to our family's concerns and actually also at 102 Golden Gate, the Hasslers. The two trees that are on the shared property line, the Monterey cypress and the Monterey pine, they believe are also. Needing to go and be replaced with something else because they're at the end of the life cycle or the danger to the pedestrians and cars on the road. So that's how we've all been working together.
That's great. Thanks. That's very helpful.
I just a question which I had asked of staff. On the hillside, you have already removed trees there, correct?
We've removed small trees. So when we moved in, the property was tremendously overgrown. So we removed. There was just dozens of little scrubby trees that couldn't get the sun. But we didn't take anything out that was against. The guidelines, the tree guidelines that we found on the city website. We made sure to measure everything in terms of diameter and tree types, but yes, we did remove a lot of small trees down there. And the reason we haven't done a lot of replanting was because we wanted to make a holistic plan. And we hadn't gotten to the point where we were really ready to do that until we made these applications. So we'll um, we'll be looking at a a larger replanting as well.
I got a few questions I I ask about the stumps. If you take out the redwoods, is the plan to leave the stumps there or remove the stumps?
We're happy to take advice on that. I I do understand that leaving the stumps does help hold the hillside in place. So we're happy to take advice from the commission or from qualified professionals on what's the best way to go on that.
But I did notice all the damages they've done to the to the driveway and you don't have anything in your plans to repair the driveway. Seems that like that's kind of missing. If you're going to have the trees removed, that's the purpose of of trying to stop the damage to your driveway, but. But I, if you do remove the stumps, it seems like you'd have to put in some sort of a retaining wall. So that would have to come in some sort of plan for that, too, I think. Anyway. I had a question. Could the, could the redwood tree roots be cut so they would not continue to damage the the driveway? But allow the trees to survive? I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know.
Could they be blocked in some ways so that if you rebuild the driveway, it won't be damaged in the future?
I don't know the answer to that, but I'm I'm happy to take advice.
Another thing I noticed in the back. Back your property where you're planting that other oak tree to be planted. There's a hillside concrete diversion ditch there that feeds water into a pipeline that comes out by the the tree, the the Monterey pine that you're planning to have removed. Out on the street. It looks to me like that was put there to protect your neighbor below. They, I think they have a swimming pool or there's swimming equipment there that's. Right on the other side of the fence, joining fence. I'm assuming that was put I put in there to protect them from drainage onto the end of their swimming pool from your property. And what I guess I'm kind of wondering about is have you considered? Any impacts that proposed tree would have on that that system? Because it looks like you're planning to put it pretty, your your drawings don't show the location of it, but it. It looks like it's close to where you're planning to plant that oak tree.
I hadn't considered that and I I guess I hadn't seen in the landscape drawing, I hadn't noted that that wasn't recorded. We'd be happy to adjust the the position of that oak tree. The truth is, I've never really understood what that concrete. Structure was for. We had no knowledge of it when we bought the property. We bought the property from the Fay family. Who'd lived there 60 years, but both the Fays had passed away and their children live elsewhere. So we really had no one to. Get information from what work had been done there when we purchased three and a half years ago, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, like to open it up to the public for comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the project? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom? Thank you, Nancy. No one on Zoom. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. For discussion. Commissioner Hart, would you like to? Start on this one?
Yes. Just like Chair. Commissioner. Lasky definitely noted that a lot of hillside growth was cut out after. The present owners moved in and. And nothing was replanted and replanted, but your your. Explanation now is that you had a long. Term plan on what to do, which. Seems like a very, very small replanting thing with some some toyons just on the edge of the property and two buckeyes at the. Entrance of your driveway. It just feels like it's going to be an extremely denuded hillside that used to be. Yes, it was mostly native bushes and stuff like that, but at least. It was something green up there instead of like eight months a year, just brown grass that looks all dead and sad. So I hope that you will. Do a little more than what this proposal that we have gotten here. But that's for the future. For the presence, present time, I am very, very reluctant to see the. The redwood trees goes because as in the report, they are visually very significant and. I think the. The two. Separate you redwoods that are by themselves look weak. A lot of trees look weak right now because of our drought. And. The proximity to this driveway that is an asphalt, a very large piece, structure of asphalt covering. More than, you know, 30% of their root ball because they go out extensively. At the surface and at this point, they they can't find anything under the the. Driveway, so they'll have to go down the hillside and the hillside is not irrigated or anything, so it looks. I think they have taken a a really hard hit from our our drought, but I think with some TLC. And also again. Just deadwooding, taking care of them. I think you would have five spectacular redwoods. Gracing your hillside and your home. I do not believe that all these cracks and I took the liberty of walking. On your driveway back to see where your oak is proposed to be planted and. It seems to me that most of these cracks are actually deferred maintenance. I don't think the face when they were there for the last 10 years did anything to their property either. So to me and looking at the cracks in the directions they are going, they seem to be more. Just a driveway that is. Failing and I for one would love to see if you're going to repair this driveway as Commissioner Store was asking. That you would do sections that would have permeable. Areas that would. Give these redwoods some some air more than moisture on that side of their root balls. I. Think the the Monterey cypress that is hanging over Golden Gate, I know that the. Owner of 102, when he was doing a major remodeling was commenting, he was eager to find out if those number eight and number seven were on his property because he wanted to take them out at that point. But I guess he couldn't because he, at least not number eight, because he wasn't on his property, but I can see that that one. Could and should maybe be taken out. And maybe even the Monterey pine number seven. Which was topped and kind of has an awkward way of growing right now. which was topped and kind of has an awkward way of growing right now. But for the redwoods and also the beautiful old oak that the driveway originally was drawn in and constructed just at the edge of the the trunk. I think the driveway, the apron there, the the edging could be repaired. And also when when you redo your driveway, and I think that oak tree should as much as possible be left and and taken care of by a good arborist because it is a a beautiful old oak. And you should be lucky to have one on your property. And then just as a little side thing, if you're afraid of fire, I happen to notice at the end of your property to the south, you have a massive wall of very old stacked firewood against your neighbor's fence. And that to me would be a something I would take care of for the safety of your home. But with that, I can say that I cannot make the findings for the removal of at least 11 trees, the the redwoods and the oak, but number eight and number seven, I can see as a yes to remove. So.
Thank you. Commissioner Burke?
Thank you. I'm also inclined to make the findings for the Cypress and the Pine. I think the arborist's report is is compelling. But I think for me, I'd like to step back and just because it sounds like this part of our neighborhood or our community is thinking about these issues in a more holistic way. And they're very concerned about safety. I've heard 1 velveteer, 104, 102, 105. I can't imagine 11 velvet areas and thinking the same thing because they're downhill to these eucalyptus. And so for me, I feel like we we need a third party, an objective third party to evaluate this holistically. If it is a safety issue that we need to address, then we should do that. I don't think we have the information before us right now to understand what is really a safety issue and what is not, and what's the best way to mitigate that issue. And so for me, I I would propose that 104 also be continued, or you consider continuing it and get this information so we can look at this with better information so we can understand, you know, where the safety is issue is, if there is one at all, and how best to address it.
Thank you. Commissioner Store.
Thank you. So I read the materials and I visited the site. I am also in favor of removal of the two pines. I think one thing I'd be concerned about is damage to your neighbor's property. If you if you're removing the stumps, that's going to be a significant job and 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 there'll have to be restoration of the property. Yeah, I mentioned that I'm a bit concerned about the proposed oak in the back by the the drainage system. If that can be installed and the drainage system maintained intact and not damaged, I then I could support that oak tree going in. I just think you should be careful with that drainage system because I think it does have a purpose. I'm unclear on the redwoods if the roots could be cut off and and a wall in wall stopping the roots from growing towards the house and through the driveway. If that's something that could be done without destroying the trees, I would like to see that looked at as if we're going to continue this so that we have that information. I don't I don't consider these trees as as a safety risk like they do with the eucalyptus. So I I'd like to try to see them saved if they can, but I also understand if they are causing damage. Is there a way around that? I I don't know the answer to that. As far as the plantings go, I think everything's way too close to the road as shown on our drawings. The tion trees, I think, ought to be set further back off the road edge. I'm also concerned about the two proposed trees at the edge of the driveway and and Golden Gate. I think they're way too close. I would actually remove those. I think they're going to cause problems with visibility for vehicles going around that corner. And I think that should be considered. That's a safety issue around vehicles. And likewise, I think the San Gabriel is also too close to the road. So so I I would remove those from this plan. I'd look at something else or placing them further back from the edge. So I could, I could, I guess I would suggest maybe we continue this because I don't know what to judge on the on the on the redwoods. So that's I think.
Thank you. Vice Chair Johnson, please.
Thank you. Yes, I I visited the site. I think generally speaking, what's been said has been very reasonable, and I think I'm in agreement. Especially about tree seven and eight, right along the property line with 102. I I think that the redwoods and the oak are really stunning and again irreplaceable. So I think instead of looking at how to address the issue through the trees or removing the trees, I think I would love to see a plan to address the driveway as well. So maybe it's possible to do like a gravel driveway there to 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 make sure that the tree roots are getting light, air, water, whatever they need, and also to kind of save the surface of the driveway so you're not dealing with that issue as the trees continue to grow. And I I would also love to see some more, you know, thought given to the rest of the hillside and what's been taken out. You do have a lot of trees here that you're putting in, but you've got the whole kind of middle section that really doesn't have anything and that would be bare, especially with removing the two trees along the property line. So I mean, it's ultimately, it's up to you if you want to continue it or not, but I think that I would like to see some adjustments made to the plan and to keep those beautiful redwoods and oak tree. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Slemaker?
Yes, I I also agree totally with my fellow commissioners. I I just will say that for me, the redwood trees and the oak tree are so beautiful and they enhance the property in the surrounding area. I'd like to see those stay because, you know, those have been there for many lifetimes and and should be able to continue to stay there. I I know that the driveway is in disrepair, but I feel like there's another direction you could go to 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 salvage that and and then hopefully help the trees that are there to continue to grow. So I also would have to say that at this time, I would have to ask for thinking.
Thank you, Commissioner Lasky.
Redwood trees are actually unique to California. And they have been our state tree since 1937. And they only grow from Southern Oregon down the California coast. John Steinbeck said, they make a mark on you and they stay with you unlike other trees. And I agree with him. They also absorb five times more carbon than any other tree. And these five mature redwoods have structure and give screening to the property. Also, the mature oak tree, which has a 26 inch diameter, has a beautiful canopy screening and it gives you shade. And it takes years to get a tree like that. They basically all need some maintenance. They need some daylighting and they haven't been trimmed. And I think that would really improve them all. I think the redwood trees and the oak are some of the most important components of this property. And they give so much charm and screening to the property. The whole property appears to have had a lack of maintenance. I mean, the the planter right on the driveway is falling apart. And I think the driveway is not just impacted by the trees. It's cracked in multiple locations. And it really needs, the driveway really needs to be redone. So for those reasons, there's no reason to cut these healthy trees. The driveway can be redone with protection for the trees. And basically, I look at this whole property as being clear cut. After these trees are out, there'll really be nothing left. I can see the benefit of having the Monterey pine and the Cypress being taken out. I mean, one of them is failing and falling toward the street. And the neighbor is very interested in the other one being taken out. And I know we can address the the replacement trees later, but I'm not sure you would even want buckeye trees at your entrance because they are deciduous. So there might be something else you might want to look at or use oak trees there. The toions and all of these trees also that you have specified, I think, in the same 15 gallons and five gallons, they all need to be 24 inch pots to be significant and also for the size of your property. And I was going to suggest, since you're using Cenotes, you might also, I mean, I don't have the plan, so I'm not sizing this, but you also get to get 20 or 30, or I don't know how many would go on that hillside. You could, you could also do that to expand that plant. So I also cannot make the findings except for the two the two trees to be moved.
Thank you. I also visited the site, read the staff report and concur with my fellow commissioners and don't really have much to add to what's already been said. So again, you you have a choice of how you want to proceed. I don't know if you heard the last one, but we can take a vote. If it's denied, you can always appeal it. And or you can continue it to a future date where you take into consideration what we've said and come back with more information and a revised plan.
I'd like to do the second, take a continuance and look into all this further based on your input. Thank you.
Okay, great. So may I have a motion to continue with the resolution as amended?
I I move to continue the resolution on 104 Golden Gate Avenue as amended.
Second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes, thank you. Hey, moving on to item number five.
Excuse me, Chair Caribbean, I have to recuse myself as I have property within 500 feet of this application.
Thank you.
I am gonna.
Good night.
Thank you, Nancy, for putting this last.
Okay, can we proceed with the staff report, please, Sammy?
Thank you again, Chair Caribbean and members of the planning commission. For your consideration this evening is another application for a design review for exterior improvements, which include a new parking platform and carport conversion at 10 Buckeye Road. The project site is a 20,300 square foot lot within the R15 zoning district and is adjacent to other single family homes. The home was built in 1958 prior to the adoption of the city zoning standards and does not conform to the district inside yard setbacks or floor area. These existing nonconformities would not be increased from this project. The project proposes to convert the existing 468 square foot carport into living space. Construct a 604 square foot deck to be level with the first floor of the home. Demolish the existing driveway and construct a new parking platform. Replace the front yard fence and entry gate and add a decorative arbor to nine feet in height. The project would also install a new concrete steps on the left side yard. Blue stone pavers in in front of the carport. And recon and reconfigure the the concrete steps coming down to the to the entry. The north elevation shows a proposed parking pad, which will be built atop of four foot retaining wall that shallows out to two and a half feet at the northern edge. The platform will be made of concrete pavers and include a 42 inch tall guardrail on three sides. The elevation also shows the new modifications to the exterior windows. The south elevation shows the proposed entry deck, the nine foot and four inch gas fireplace, the entry gate, parking platform, and the proposed window configuration. The residents would also receive a new matching sea metal roof as with the ADU and ADU garage. The entry gate would be made of vertical wood boards and the gate columns would be made of stucco in a silver gray color. Two light fixtures are proposed on each column, front column, and would fit and and one would fixture would be placed facing the home on the horizontal beam of the arbor. Colors and materials would include a sea metal roof in a gray color, black windows and doors, bamboo decking, Benjamin Moore exterior paint in a warm white seashell color and downward casting entry lights in a black matte finish. Landscaping would include a English laurel to 12 feet. Pittus forum to eight feet and golf ball pittus forum to four feet. Shrubs would also be planted south of the bamboo deck. Now, commissioners, you received an addendum to the project plans, which show the new garbage trash enclosure. So this will 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 change. The landscaping will change. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA. And staff has received three letters in support of the project from adjacent neighbors at 45 Bayview, 8 Buckeye Road and 36 Golden Gate Avenue. As a as condition, staff believes that the evidence supports the required findings and recommends the planning commission adopt the resolution granting design review for 10 Buckeye Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Yeah, I had one question. On the plans that were just submitted today in terms of the trash enclosure, what it's hard to tell from an elevation standpoint, how that sits versus the parking pad? So it's below?
Commissioner Burke, that may be a good question for the applicant.
I'll hold it. Thank you.
We'll we'll finish with staff and then he'll bring it back to you. Thank you. Sorry. Anyone else for staff?
Yeah, just real quick. So Sammy, the the landscape lighting in the lighting proposed at the entry gate, they're considered landscaping. That'll all come back for so that's not final. It's just preliminary here. That's right. Okay.
Yes.
All right. And and how about, does that also apply to the car pad? Or is that is that preliminary at this stage? Or is that, are we looking to prove exactly what what's here?
The the carb, the the parking structure would be approved here as is if there was any modifications you would all.
So it's not landscaping and?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And can we hear from the applicant, please? Just push the button. Just push the button.
I'm Kelly Haglen and the architect for this project. Sammy did a great job of summarizing what we're proposing to do. So I just wanted to introduce my clients, Eric and Kate Larson. I think some of you met Kate when you came to the site. And we've tried to address some of the comments that came up. And so one was the trash enclosure, like what was the plan for the four cans onsite? And so what we've submitted as an addendum shows a, this is sited just below the retaining wall at the backside, so it wouldn't be visible from the street. And we'd need to level it slightly, so there'd probably be about an 18-inch high to two-foot high, a little bit of retaining. So that's leveled off and then a four-foot fence around that with a gate. So that's the plan for that. And I think there's not a whole lot more to add, except that just as an explanation of the need for the parking pad is that Kate and Eric have lived here now for a couple of years. And it's, it's been really challenging to park on such a steep incline and get small children in and out of the car where doors are slamming because of the weight of the doors on an incline like that. And then also just exiting the driveway safely is a huge concern because visibility is minimal as you pull out. So that's, that's been a driving force and we've worked closely with Sammy to determine how close to the road we could put a parking pad. Because we aren't trying to keep the height of the retaining walls around that at the four-foot high maximum. That's the restriction here. And also that will enable us to, a four-foot high retaining wall you can build with the county uniform detail, which doesn't require drilled piers and extensive amount of concrete. So it's a, it's a really reasonable way to do it. So that's why you'll see that the surface of the parking pad is sloped slightly and that's because of the height of the retaining walls. But we think it'll be a huge improvement over what's the existing conditions. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Questions. I had a couple of questions. I was actually going to ask you, it scared me the way I saw the parking pad with the, with the car kind of slanted to the house. So you said you actually, it is slanted for drainage or?
Well, it's slanted because in order to level that, the retaining wall would have to be several feet higher.
I see, I see. And are you going to put a roof on top of where the garbage containers are?
No, that's not proposed.
No?
No.
Okay. And I just, I know you know this, but I just wanted to draw attention to the parking pad is actually right on the property line, so.
Yes.
All right. So I don't know if you want to move it in a little bit or I guess you'll just have to be careful when you build it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be watching that. Moving it in, if, as we move it, that retaining wall would grow because of the way the grade changes are, which again makes it slope even more.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Store?
Yeah. So back to the parking pad. You explained one of my questions because I'm, I was concerned having the car parked on a pitch like that. Every time you get out, the doors are going to want to open all the way up and slam against the guardrails. So it seems like a weird design to me from that perspective. You explained it's to, you're limited by the height of the retaining wall.
Yeah.
Now that you're adding a pad for the trash, it seems to me that you could raise that even, that pad even higher for the trash to support the retaining wall for the pad. So you could actually raise the retaining, you could actually level that parking off by adding in that, yeah, stepping.
We can, we can look at that, but the highest corner is the corner that's closer to the deck. So it's not where the trash is. It's just because of the way the natural grade is there. But it's, it's not going to be that dramatic a slope. So I think, I don't think with that grade change that it's going to have the car doors moving. It's not anything like what's there now.
Well, and also if you're going to leave it like that, you need to actually put in some sort of a wheel chalk. That's, that's part of the parking pad for safety reasons. Yeah. I had spoken to the owners there about actually pushing the pad further in so the cars don't stick out past the main fence and perhaps putting a rolling fence, a rolling gate behind the cars so that they could actually park off-street and actually enclose it. And they seemed to like that, but I didn't know you had this constraint.
We do, yeah. So the more we push it in, the more it's got a slope to not exceed a four-foot high retaining wall.
Is the main issue there cost?
Well, part of it's the code says no higher retaining walls than four feet.
But we have a lot of retaining walls that are higher than four feet.
In the zoning code, it says retaining wall height at four feet, so.
It's not in the setback though. The retaining walls will on their property.
Well, it's not the entire.
Side yard setback? Oh, it's the side yard setback you're concerned with. But the four feet is over here.
It, yeah, it maxim, yeah, so we might go just a little bit higher. We have to, yeah, we'll review that, the grading, exact grading. But yeah, right now our highest corner is where I've got a note number five pointing to the corner. That's, you can see where the grade starts to drop off there.
Yeah, that's not in the setback, so, yeah. I'd encourage you to think, rethink that now that you've got the trash, how you could maybe utilize the trash.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? See none. Thank you very much. I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone here in the public that wishes to make a comment? See none. Nancy, anybody on Zoom? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Burke, you want to lead us up?
Sure. I spent time at the site and went through the plans with the owner. You know, I'd like to just applaud them on taking a very thoughtful approach to this project. I really appreciate how you worked closely with the city to try and get ahead of any potential questions or concerns the commissioners might have. And then also how you worked with your neighbors or ensured that your neighbors were also comfortable with the plan as well. So I don't have any concerns. I think, as I said, it's a very thoughtful plan and I wish you the best when you finish it. I hope it's an easy process for you and I can certainly make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Slaymaker?
Yes, I agree totally with my fellow commissioner. I was really excited about walking the property and the process that they have gone through to work with the neighbors and try to fit in with the property the way it is now. I was very excited about the fact that they were going to take in part of that driveway, the front part of the house and utilize it for additional outdoor living with the bamboo deck. When I, before I was at the site, I was a little worried about the nine-foot tall exterior gas fireplace. But, but once I was on the property, I could see with the slope that that was not an issue for anyone. I think the new double pane windows will give a great sense of new insulation for the home and bring the home much more into our current overall design. I have no issues with their finishes. I think the great new metal roof for the house and the AUD will enhance everything. So without going into all the other things I like about it, I will just say that I think certainly make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Store?
Yeah, thank you. I read the materials, visited the site, talked with Kate and Eric. Gave them some ideas. I think we've talked about some of that tonight already, so I'll skip over that with the car park. I was, thank you for adding the trash enclosure. I think that's a good addition. The one thing I'd say that nobody else has mentioned on the upper story, when you're on the right side of the home, you have that one window that is in the bathroom that is high enough that if there weren't all the trees there, it would actually look into the neighbor's yard swimming pool and they'd look at you. And I think there's a privacy issue there, so I would recommend that you put in either, you know, I know you don't like celestial window idea, but perhaps an opaque window. All three of the existing windows on the house on that side are at that upper level are opaque now. And I, maybe, maybe assumption, but I'm assuming that was there for privacy before. So that's the only condition I would add to approval of the DR. I can make all the rest of findings. And also I want to thank Sammy for all these great work and all these reports. I appreciate all the work you're doing for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lasky, please.
We don't really have a lot to say. I think it's really a tasteful update of a 50s house. And it really keeps in the character of the neighborhood, keeping the footprint of it. And it certainly needs some maintenance and updating. I looked at it kind of like they're accessorizing the house because they're doing no windows and roof. And I think it's very well done. They're refining the house with so many improved details. So I, my only suggestion, which I mentioned, was adding a tree perhaps in the yard where you have the plastic grass. I think, and that will also make some of it, it will absorb water. You'll have something that's actually growing there that will absorb some water and for drainage. So that's my only suggestion. I think you've done a great job. And I can make the findings.
Thank you. Vice Chair Johnson, please.
Okay, I won't rehash everything that's been said, but I, I agree. And I just, I remember when this property was on the market and I remember thinking that this is such a great opportunity for a young family to come in and, you know, if they're willing to take on the work. So I really just appreciate the spirit of collaboration and the way that you've worked with the city. And I totally agree. I think it's a really beautiful, modern refresh of this home that, that really needs it, that hasn't been touched in a while. A couple of things that we talked about when I was there that I would love to see, really minor things. Some greenery just on the street side of the fence would be nice. And then I don't know if it's in the plan, but some sort of lighting within the parking pad, just for safety. I'm thinking like at night, if you're getting in and out of the car and parking, you're going to want to see where you're going. So again, during minor, but overall I think it's a really great plan and I'm very supportive and I can make the findings.
Thank you. I also visited the site, read the staff report. I agree with everything my fellow commissioners have said, don't have much to add. Want to thank the applicant and the architect for taking all their comments that were given over the weekend and try to include them in this meeting. Makes it much easier to be able to approve something. All of the things that were said by Commissioner Lasky about the tree and the lighting by Commissioner Johnson and plants in the front, that can all be subject to the final landscape and lighting plan. So the only thing, other thing that I heard was the window in the bathroom, that it be opaque. Commissioner Store is the only one that said it, but I can add a story. Recently someone said, someone did a remodel and put in a very large window in their bathroom. And they can actually have talked about the people's bodies because they can see them through the window. So it might be something that you might want to consider just for your own sakes, that the neighbors aren't watching you.
We, we did talk about it and Kate and Eric would really love to keep it clear glass. And, you know, we understand that there, the window is right now a translucent. But, you know, it is probably an original window from the 50s when there wasn't a lot of vegetation there. So Kate took some pictures of, of the view from the window. So I don't know if that's anything I can share, but we can make copies. So how do I do that?
You can just bring it up. We'll take a quick look.
Yeah, we will just have the one window instead of three on that upper level.
Okay.
And, yeah, with it closed, it just, it's the only window in the primary bathroom. So it just, I think, would feel a little claustrophobic if you couldn't see out to the treetops, the sky.
Okay, the pictures help a lot. Did you go up to the bathroom?
No.
Okay.
No, I didn't go up there, but also I, you know, I kind of think these are 50-year things. You may not be there. The trees may disappear and then eventually that's wide open. So I, you know, it just seems like it's a privacy issue. Maybe you don't worry about it, but maybe somebody moves in someday and does, so.
Well, they always have the option of adding the opaque film, three film.
But the neighbor, the neighbor doesn't have that option.
At this point, Kate has spoken with the neighbor who has said that they don't have any issue, concerns with privacy with the, you know, the neighbor that's.
Does anybody else on the commission have an issue with the window?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think, can I have a?
Motion for the project? I move to adopt the resolution granting design review for the proposed residence at 10 Buckeye Road.
Nice second.
As amended, sorry.
Sorry, second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Store?
Yes.
Commissioner Lasky?
Yes.
Chair, Vice Chair Johnson? And Chair Keripia?
Yes. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Got a big project. Take motion to adjourn? We're all done, right? Yeah?
So moved. Second?